Is going to be the pledge of allegiance. And I've asked Eagle Scout Prospect Jake Smith to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All yours.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mrs. Friedman. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Salvatore. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven to zero. Next is the student government report. Do we have a, anyone from student government here tonight? Please come to the podium, thank you.
In December, we ran Adopted Family from the first to the fourteenth, which is where we collect toys and donations for Cumberland families who can't afford them. We had two families from BF Norton and one CHS family. We were also able to provide them with food for the holidays. On December fourth, CHS had the annual open house, a new student showcase for the current eighth graders or future freshmen. All clubs of CHS were set up in the wellness for the students to go around and ask questions. The art and music department were showcased in the foyer, followed by tours given by current CHS students. Department curriculum as well as advanced placement courses were available for viewing. Our student government meeting was on December seventeenth. This meeting, we wrapped all the gifts for the adopted family and started talking about the upcoming Winter Ball. Our main event for January is the Winter Ball, which will be on January eighteenth, located at Wright's Farm from six to 10:30 PM. About 400 students will be attending, and we are looking forward to a memorable night. Our monthly student government meeting will be on Tuesday, January fifteenth, right after school, and we will be finalizing preparations for the Winter Ball dance. Midterms will start on Friday, January eighteenth, and end on Thursday, January eleventh. Oh, excuse me, twenty-fourth, wow. After January, we will prepare for another blood drive and our pennies for patients campaign. We thank you all for having us and have a good night.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to note for the record that Town Council Mike Kinch is here hiding in the back, and we'd like to point out we're grateful when the members of the town council come to the meetings. Thank you. All right, so next on the business is our consent agenda. Approval of minutes from our regular meeting of twelve, thirteen, twenty eighteen. Approval of minutes from executive session from twelve, thirteen, twenty eighteen. Our enrollment report from January first, twenty nineteen. Our school police report from December first, twenty eighteen. And a residency truancy report from January first, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Next is report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting for one, ten, twenty nineteen. There were no votes taken tonight in the executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes from one, ten, twenty nineteen. So moved by Mr. Hess. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters and Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion?
Bernardo.
Bernardo, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven to zero. Next, I would like to report out on executive session. On December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, the school committee took a vote, seven to zero, to withdraw from the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative. Per rules, we'll try to report it out as soon as possible, and we couldn't reveal it last month because of, we needed to let them know first. So we are withdrawing from the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative at the end of their fiscal year. Thank you. Next is superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent.
If you could please join me down at the podium, Mr. Chairman. Every year, we ask all of our administrators to nominate a support staff person that they feel is deserving as recognition for being the support staff person of the year. So what happens is, each of the administrators identify someone that they feel is very deserving, and they say some really nice things about each of the individuals that they nominate. And then we, as everyone is part of the leadership team, they, we literally vote on who we feel is deserving of this recognition. As you all know, we have a lot of outstanding support staff employees in the district, and I am pleased to let you all know that this year's District Support Staff Professional of the Year is Roberto Duran. So, so what happens is, each of the administrators write some really nice things about the employees that they are recommending for this recognition. So what I'd like to do is share some of the nice things that Dr. Masterson wrote about Roberto, who works at McCourt Middle School. I proudly nominate Mr. Roberto Duran for the Cumberland School Department 2018 District Education Support Professional of the Year. Mr. Duran brings a high level of professionalism to his work. He is prompt and thorough with all his tasks. One of the best qualities that Mr. Duran possesses is initiative. He routinely takes the initiative to address problems or issues and takes care of them around the building. He does not wait for direction. Mr. Duran also takes it upon himself to develop a schedule of tasks and manages them with ease. He also does not hesitate to request a meeting with me to share any concerns with the office, staff, or administration, or provide feedback on how procedures can improve at school. A recent example was when Mr. Duran spoke with me about a significant traffic pattern change we had to make due to construction taking place on Highland Avenue. He provided feedback based on what he saw every morning, and I took his feedback into consideration. Mr. Duran is more than a custodian. He is a dedicated member of our staff. One of our custodians on second shift has been out, had been out for over a month. Mr. Duran volunteered to take part of that shift. His dedication has helped keep that section of the school clean and has kept morale of those teachers in those classrooms high because they're coming into clean classrooms. We are thrilled to have Mr. Duran at our school, and we're thrilled to have him working in our district. He is a quiet inspiration. He is a model for hard work, professionalism, perseverance, and dedication. He is genuinely a nice man. And it is for these reasons, and many more, that Mr. Duran is the 2018 Cumberland School Department District Education Support Professional of the Year. Congratulations. Congratulations, Roberto. So one of the things that we do to identify and recognize the individual is we have this plaque, let me see the plaque, and the plaque says, Cumberland School Department 2018 District Education Support Professional of the Year, presented to Roberto Duran in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational support. So it says that. And we also have a plaque that hangs in the main foyer of this building, right at the main entryway, and this plaque has the names of all of the recipients since 2013. This says Cumberland School Department District Education Support Professional of the Year. This plaque already has Roberto's name on it, and we will hang it proudly in the main entrance of this building. So once again, congratulations to you, Roberto. So, do you want to say anything? You don't, sorry.
Only, I want to say thank you. I'll be happy, I'm happy to be surprised to part this thing. I'm very happy, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a few more things that I would like to share with all of you. We have with us this evening Shawna Spillane. You all know Shawna. She is the general manager for our Sedexo Food Services in the district, and she is here to let you all know about the Sedexo National Healthy High School Award that the Cumberland School Department won. So with that, Shawna.
Good evening. Every year, Sedexo has a national competition that we participate in, and at the high school, we actually track our healthy snacks that we sell. We give those numbers each week to the national team, and sometimes there's even bonus points. So this year, we are thirteenth place winner out of 200 schools, and we're proud to present this check for $1,000, which we are the recipient of, to actually the new program that Heather is helping us to expand, the culinary program. Hopefully, a pathway will be developed. So we're hoping that this $1,000 will get started with some of the small wares and the equipment needs. So we're happy to present it to Heather.
Thank you, Shawna. And last but not least, there's, I just wanted to give everyone a quick update on the school construction bond. As you all know, there is a lot of work that needs to be done, and we have been meeting frequently to start the process. And as you all know, the first step in the process for us is to hire an owner's project manager. I think I mentioned this to you recently, but it is worth repeating because we're moving along with the process. We did a request for proposal. We received five bids from businesses who are interested in taking on this responsibility. So we are in the process. We have a team of people who are reviewing these bids. We are actually scoring each of the bids using a rubric, and we're going to be interviewing, our plan is to review, interview either the end of next week or the beginning of the following week, the businesses that we feel are worth consideration to do this really important work and work that will be ongoing probably for five years. So this company would be playing a really important role over the course of this work that will be done. So we, as I mentioned, I think we are meeting at least weekly as a school team to plan this work. We have a meeting next week at the Department of Ed to learn more about the next steps in the process for us. And as I have mentioned, Mayor Mutter has been actively involved in this process. We felt that it was really important for him to know exactly what is going on and all that is entailed in this process so that we can move along as efficiently as possible. We're really looking forward to this owner's project manager because that will really, that will really help alleviate some of the work that needs to be done and some of the work that we're doing. And, you know, one of the things that I think is really important for us to acknowledge is the fact that, and this has been brought up on more than one occasion, you know, we are educators. So, you know, hopefully, we understand the education business and what it takes to improve the performance of students and staff. We are not, you know, construction manager professionals, so we need help in that particular area of expertise. So we're looking forward to have that person on board, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. So I will keep you updated as we move along with that process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions? All set. All right, next order of business is payment of bills. Mr. Hess.
Okay, so we did meet for fiscal this evening upstairs, and we do have payment of bills in the amount of $1,769,169.03. That was approved upstairs in fiscal on a three to zero vote, and I would move passage of payment of bills in the amount of $1,769,169.03.
Mr. Hess moves passage of payment of bills, $1,769,169.03. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Salvatore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven to zero. Next is the fiscal management and subcommittee update. Mr. Hess.
Okay, so just an update on business office monthly reports in addition to payment of bills. We did have some discussion about the current state of the budget. Healthcare costs have been trending upwards for the past nine weeks, still something that we obviously have to keep an eye on, and we will do that. In addition, we had three items that we voted on upstairs, which I believe will come up later on in the meeting. Is that correct? We'll address at that point.
Next is Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update. There was no meeting?
There was no meeting.
Great. Next is Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. Thank you.
The Achievement and Communication Subcommittee meeting met on Tuesday night, January eighth, and on the agenda was a discussion led by Mr. Devanna and his team about our RICAS results. And so while we are thrilled with our results, and we like to keep reiterating the success of our RICAS results in how we were, are, fourth in the state for math and ELA, we know that there's always room for improvement. And what Mr. Devanna and his team are doing now is digging into the data and looking at where those areas of improvement are needed. And that was good discussion for us, and that, and that type of analysis will influence our budgetary decisions for the upcoming school year. So it will help us to really look at where do we need to pinpoint to improve achievement district-wide. So that was a main discussion area Tuesday night, and we also talked about future meetings in looking at achievement at the high school and looking at various policies, and so we set forth some of our topics for future meetings.
Thank you. Next is comments from the public. If anyone here has a comment and would like to speak, please come to the podium, please. And then we have Town Council Kinch that would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the warm welcome. I just wanted to stop by, my position as a town councilor, and by the way, it's Michael Kinch, 25 Murphy Drive, to let you know that I was named as one of the liaisons to the school committee, and I've already talked to Committee Man Salvatore about it. So I know we also have numerous friends, you know, in common from the committee, so if you feel comfortable talking, you know, with your regular friends, that is fine, but if I could do, what I want to do is if I can do anything for you in that position, please don't hesitate to call me. And again, congratulations, I don't think you can bring up those scores enough, so as we all know, making the plan, which you did way before I was an elected office, obviously, but sticking to the plan can be the hardest part. So congratulations on that again, and anything I can do in the future, please don't hesitate.
Council Kinch, thank you for coming. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to new business. Next is a discussion under a vote to approve CHS Students Eagle Scout Project. Superintendent Mitchell got an email from a young man, Jake Smith, and he's here to give a presentation about his proposed Eagle project. Go right ahead, Jake. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jake Smith. I'm an Eagle Scout candidate and the Assistant Senior Patrol Leader for Troop on Diamond Hill. Aiden Hunt over there is my senior patrol leader. He's also going for his Eagle Scout. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouts program of the Boy Scouts of America. Only 4% of the Boy Scouts are granted this rank after a lengthy process, and each Eagle Scout candidate is required to complete a project that benefits a school or community. For my project, I'm proposing to construct a pergola for an outdoor classroom in the courtyard of the Cumberland Hill School. I chose this project because I was a student at Cumberland Hill, and I feel it'd be a great way to give back to the school that has given so much to me. And also, my mother over there is a special education teacher at the school. I discussed my idea with the school principal, Mrs. Malcolm, and she believes, she agrees that it would benefit the school. The pergola would be a 10 by 12-foot wooden structure that I would construct in the spring with my Boy Scout troop. I am requesting the school committee for approval to pursue this project. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Does anyone from the school committee have any questions in regards to it? Mrs. Malcolm, it'll go with the wood I gave you last time, I guess. It's been used, all right.
... for the extra addition to our outdoor learning space that we used money from the Cumberland Education Foundation to start, and this just continues progressing, and students are out there almost every day, weather permitting. So when Jake approached us, we were more than happy. We even talked to the science committee about it, and we're more than happy to have this as an opportunity for our students and to help Jake out as well.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? So I need a motion to approve Jake's proposal. Motion by Mr. Hess.
Second.
Second by almost everyone on this side, and Mr., all right, so we're all seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Jake, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Cumberland High School CTE Pathway Presentation.
So thank you for inviting me here to give you an update on the status of the CTE programs at Cumberland High School. So we currently have four approved programs. They were all approved during the summer. So our first program is the Project Lead the Way Biomedical Science. We also have Information Technology, Law and Public Safety, and Robotics and Pre-Engineering. So the students have been working in those programs for the last year and a half since we started the application process. We've submitted some paperwork, so we can now track the students through RICAS for categorical funding. So we submitted the data on the currently enrolled students today. We had 57 students that were enrolled in March of 2018 for these approved programs. So we submitted that data for the categorical funding. Going forward, so what's new so far, so those are our current programs, but we have a brand new website. So the website is cte.cumberlandschools.org. It is a live site. It has links to the materials that you have in front of you. It has links to the new program videos. There's a link to the application, and there's a new CTE web adra, a new CTE email. So if parents or students have questions, they can reach out directly to that cte@cumberlandschools.org email address. There are also new logos that have been created. There's a new Cumberland High School logo. We took the anchor that's been really popular both in the school and the community, uprighted it a little bit to make it a little bit more formal-looking. And then we have a logo that's white with the blue, and then blue with the white, so depending on the background of the document that you're using, you can use a different logo. We also had logos created for each individual program so that there's consistency between the four programs, and there's also a logo for school counseling. So all of the promotional materials were distributed at both open houses and the middle school presentations. So we went to North Cumberland Middle School and to McCourt Middle School, and we presented to all of the eighth graders. And then those same videos and promotional materials were available at the potential student open house that was held in December. On the next slide is the sample video. So this is the, I don't know if this is going to work or not. Is this going to play? So this is our overview video. So they created an overview video that shows a snippet of each program in addition to four program-specific videos. So what I put in the slide presentation right here was just the overview video, but the individual videos are available, both in Blue News for current students, and then on that cte.cumberlandschools.org website. They're on Twitter, too, I believe.
... I heard you were mentioning something to the other guys, and how why you're talking to a lot of them. I didn't think you had a lot of them. I mean, you know, I'm sure I'm a little bit, you know, you're 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 a little bit, you know,
The students in the videos did a fantastic job. In the individual program videos, the program teachers are featured in addition to more students from each program. They're really proud of them. They were really nervous when they were on camera, but they're really proud of the way they came out. And so the promotional materials and the teachers have done a great job advertising the programs. So we've seen a huge boost in our enrollment. So I have on the next slide our numbers from last year. So the applications and enrollment from last year were the same, with it being the first year of the program. The number of students that applied and were accepted ended up being our total enrollment. So this year's application window is still open. So the in-district application window has closed. The out-of-district application window is still open. So there are some applications that are trickling in. But you can see there's a lot of growth in every single program. So, for example, in biomedical science, this year we have 65 students. We're only losing 15 of those graduating seniors. We're going to add 43 more students, which puts our total enrollment in biomedical science at 93, which is a 43% increase in that one particular program. Some of the other programs see more growth, like the Law and Public Safety and Robotics and Pre-Engineering. Those program sizes are tripling from this year to next year. So our projected overall growth in the CTE programs is an 88% growth in enrollment. So, right now, we're in the process of applying for CTE accreditation for two new programs. The application window is due at the end of this month. It's due at the 22nd. So we're looking at our Business Management and Finance Program as well as our Visual Arts Program. So the Business Management and Finance will include accounting, personal finance. There's business and entrepreneurship opportunities. We have sports and entertainment marketing. They'll be getting their QuickBooks. They'll do NOCTI and basic accounting. And then there's a new Invest Program, which covers insurance. So that'll be covered probably in that final Capstone course, which is their school-based enterprise course. The Visual Arts Program is an umbrella program. So within that program, there'll be three different pathways the students can choose based on their personal interest. They could choose the 2D pathway, the 3D pathway, or graphic design. And right now, we're in the process of getting an advisory board together, local artists, galleries, and other places in Providence, the Waterfire Arts Center, to try and get some more industry partnerships for that particular program. Going forward, we've identified that a lot of our programs are college prep programs. So we want to start building programs that are more trade-centered, career-centered. So we're looking at possible culinary arts and restaurant management. We've toyed with the idea of some materials and manufacturing. There's some local schools, like Pontigan's that has something like that, construction and carpentry, and then plumbing and HVAC. Because the application window for our current enrollment is closing, we're going to be putting the team together soon to review the applications. Once they're reviewed, we'll send the letters home to students and families. There'll be an Accepted Students Night, and then there'll be an Orientation Day for students. Any questions?
Mr. Salvatore.
Excellent, excellent presentation. My question is, the IT, information technology, it seems like the enrollment numbers are low.
So the enrollment numbers-
Will that be assessed and changed?
So that's our newest program, when you're looking at the classes. So the classes within that course sequence are the classes that were created the most recently. So we had, when we first did applications last year for this program, we only had three or four students apply. When the teachers spoke to the students, they noticed that there were juniors and seniors that were in the program, had completed the course sequence, and they weren't aware of the CTE. So they've been doing a good job this year of advertising the class to their students. There are five students that are interested in applying that are just not ready to commit yet. So when I spoke to Mrs. Petty, one of the computer science teachers earlier this week, she said, "I know our numbers are low, but we have a large cohort of sophomores that are interested in completing the course sequence. They're just not ready to commit to the CTE yet." She also has upped her enrollment in her Girls Who Code Club. They met today. And she's advertising the program with those students as well.
Excellent. And one more question. The Law and Public Safety, do we have some kind of a partnership with the Cumberland Police Department?
So Law and Public Safety is the partnership with Roger Williams University. We're also working with Cumberland EMS. They are doing the EMT course, the optional EMT course after school. And the students in that program, their work-based learning is through that Capstone project and that research paper they do at Roger Williams University. The teachers have an advisory board that they're currently utilizing. And there are, the detective is on there, and then there's someone else from the police department on that advisory board. So when students are looking for work-based learning outside of the classroom, we give them those lists of contacts.
You're on this. I like it.
I'm doing what I can.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Friedman.
Congratulations. This is really great work in a relatively short amount of time. I do have a question on these various ones where it talks about earning college credit. So, for example, you know, might say earn college credit through URI. But on the Robotics and Pre-Engineering, it says earn college credits through New England Institute of Technology if the student attends New England Institute of Technology. On these other ones, it doesn't say that. Does that mean that they can get the credit and potentially-
So all of the credits that they're earning through URI and then through Roger Williams are transferable. New England Tech credits are non-transferable credits. And then same with the Project Lead the Way. Those credits are through Stevenson University.
Yep.
And those eight credits that they get for the bio classes through Stevenson University are transferable. It's just that New England Tech is not. So we're working with CCRI right now to try and build some articulation agreements with CCRI, which would be transferable.
Very good. Thank you.
Heather, I know during the open house, we had some people from out of district that were attending. Do we have a sense of how many kids may want to attend from out of district?
So, the number I got at the end of open house was we had 10 families. There was also an event last weekend where families were interested. So I've gotten a lot of those families' contact information. I've sent them the information. And the window to apply opened just before the holiday break. So at this point in time, we only have two applications in, but the window's still open. And then once that window closes, anyone who applies after that is eligible for the spring lottery. So we wanted our application window to close before we do scheduling and budget, so we have an idea for how many students we have in each program. Anything after that, we'll fill available seats with a lottery.
And this one would be for the superintendent. Mr. Mitchell, do we have any money in our budget to advertise this, you know, to get the other students from out of district as well? I mean, I know we're in a tight schedule right now, but maybe the next round of classes that, you do some advertising?
So I did, sorry to interject, I did speak with the Valley Breeze this week to get some numbers on print advertising, and he's going to work on numbers for web-based advertising. So I can share some of those numbers because we can determine which market and which zones we would want to advertise in. So I can share some of those numbers.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members? Well said. Thank you. I appreciate-
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is discussion and a vote on the superintendent's recommendation of ISKE employee termination. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval.
Do we have any discussion? And I need a motion from the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation of termination. I would also ask that our attorney prepares a-
Decision.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Fiorello to uphold the superintendent's recommendation and have the attorney write the decision. We have a second by Mr. Salvatore. Is there any discussion? Anyone have any questions? No. Does this have to be a roll-call vote or just a vote? All right. So this needs to be a roll-call vote. So I'll start with Mr. Salvatore.
Yes.
Mr. Salvatore votes yes. Mrs. Bernato, yes. Mrs. Waters, yes. Mrs. Friedman, yes. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Yes. And the chair votes yes. On a seven-to-zero vote, we are voting to uphold the superintendent's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, school committee members.
Next is discussion and a vote to approve Sedesco Motor Vehicle Accident Claim Payment. So what we have here is a, we had an accident using one of the school department vehicles. The school department was not notified right away about the accident. And what happened was is the vendor, Sedesco, to our vehicle, they asked us to pay the claim. And because of the timeliness of the claim, we didn't do it. And we made Sedesco reimburse the school district for the claim. So we have a motion to pay the claim, knowing that we're getting reimbursed back from Sedesco. So I need a motion to pay the claim in, I need the amount.
Mr. Chair, the amount is $2,365.03.
So it's $2,365.03 and how many cents?
Three cents.
Three cents. So I need a motion to pay the claim.
And just for the record, I make a note that we did take this up in fiscal, and this was approved in fiscal on a two-to-one vote with Mr. Salvatore in opposition.
All right. So Mr. Hess makes a motion for payment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Against.
Against. Mr. Salvatore votes against. It passes six to one. Next is discussion and a vote to approve resolutions SCR 201901, $83 million construction bond for Torado Associates to amend their contract. Mr. Hess?
Okay, this was taken up in fiscal upstairs. This is for a demographic study that is required as part of the school construction bond in order for us to qualify. This is for $10,000 for that study. It will be used not only by, or it will be useful not only to the school committee, but I think also to the town as it will look at, get into the demographics in a deep and meaningful way. This was passed upstairs on a three-to-zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. Hess moves passage of SCR 201901, amending the contract with Torado Associates to pay for the democratic, the demographic study.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salvatore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Okay. All right. Next is SCR 201902 for the town council to establish a school construction and building committee. Mr. Hess, this was for downstairs only. What this was is by charter, anything of a certain amount, there has to be a building committee. So now that the $83 million referendum has been approved by the voters, we need to have a building committee established. So your vote tonight, we will send this off to the town council. Tell them we'd like to set up a building committee, and they'll set the timeframe for that. Then the school committee has one appointment, and there must be a school committee member to that building committee. Superintendent also has a vote, has an appointment, and then the town, council, and mayor have appointments as well. So this is get the ball rolling in regards to, you know, getting the money from the state to do the work. So I need a motion to approve SCR-
I think you need to read that to the record.
Oh, I can read it to the record. A resolution empowering the school committee to request that the mayor and town council take the necessary actions to establish a building committee to assist with managing construction projects anticipated from the $83 million referendum the voters approved in November of 2018. Whereas the town charter requires a building committee to be formed, whereas the Rhode Island Department of Education requires a building committee to be in place to be reimbursed by the state for construction projects. So be it resolved that the Cumberland School Committee as follows, a resolution empowering the school committee to approve this resolution. So I need a motion?
Motion for approval?
Motion by Mr. Hess. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Salvatore. Is there any discussion? We will be talking to everyone here about an appointment to this building committee. So it will be on our next agenda. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes opposed? Ayes have it, seven to zero. That takes care of that one. Next is SCR- Where's this one, Mr. Hess?
That's SCPR 1201901.
It's a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to award a purchase order to Robert H. Lord Company of Manchester, Connecticut, for two sets of three-tier bleachers in an amount not to exceed $14,435. Mr. Hess, you had this upstairs?
We did. So this is to install new bleachers in the NCMS gym. As you know, we spent some money to replace the floor, and this will be a, an upgrade to the existing bleachers that were removed as part of that work and are really not suitable to go back in that space. This passed upstairs on a three-to-zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. Hess moves passage. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bernato. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. Next is personal recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, we have a few. This evening, we actually have three retirements. If I may, I'd like to do all three of them together. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Bonnie Lynn de Blois, Library Media Specialist at Garvin Memorial School and BF Norton School with an effective date of June 30, 2019, after 30 years of service. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Linda Ionetta, EL Coordinator for the Cumberland School Department with an effective date of June 30, 2019, after 29 years of service. And I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Deborah McCann, Classroom Paraprofessional at BF Norton School with an effective date of January 30, 2019, after 18 years of service. Recommend approval. Mr. Chairman.
Any other motion for the vote on the retirements, three retirements?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Friedman. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Waters. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I have two coaching appointments for winter sports. One is Jacob Borja, Co-Indoor Track Boys Varsity, and Adam Winniars, Co-Indoor Track Boys Varsity. Mr. Chairman, I recommend appointment.
I have a motion. Motion by Mrs. Waters. Do I have a second? No, it was. Second by Mrs. Friedman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you. All right. Next is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Does there, anyone have any school committee comments or reports? So I just have the one, again, just going back, we are going to appoint the one member of the school committee to the building committee. It's going to be, you know, a five-year term, maybe, maybe less. But if, even if you do accept it and you decide you're going to step aside, you know, that's fine. We'll find another school committee member to do it. I mean, I started with, when we did the severance addition at McCourt Middle School, and Dr. Masterson reminded me, that was 25 years ago. So, but I'm not doing it this time. So, just so you're aware that we are going to be talking to you about the appointment. And that's it. Anyone else? Mr. Hess?
I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the Clef Singers and the CHS Jazz Band, who did a phenomenal job at Mayor Mutter's inauguration this past Saturday. Really contributed to making it a wonderful event. And then, as people may know, that we've had some difficulty hiring enough bus monitors for the elementary school runs. Mr. Mitchell and his staff have and are utilizing different approaches to find and hire monitors in this challenging employment environment. I would encourage anyone who might be interested in this employment opportunity to reach out to the district administration. You can earn $11.25 an hour while being chauffeured throughout the town in striking yellow buses with our great elementary school students. You get exercise, stretching and bending to check under the buses, and you help contribute to making Rhode Island one of the safest states in the country for bus-going elementary students despite Rhode Island's utter disdain for the turn signal.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Salvatore.
It almost sounds like Mr. Hess is in sales with that pitch. I like it.
Or availability, one or the other, for $11.25 an hour. Anyone else? Superintendent, do we have executive session for-
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
So-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Fiorello. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, Mrs. Waters, Mrs. Bernato. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you.